Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion, possible action and vote. With regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of June 6th and June 21st, 2017, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number two, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Contract. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on approving the Rhode Island Resource and Recovery Renewal Contract. Chief? Just state your name for the record, sir.
Bob Nascimento.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nascimento?
Bob, is this contract exactly the same as last thing?
No, sir.
What's different?
Increases in the tipping fees for solid waste. This year, starting July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018, it is now thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents a ton. It used to be thirty-two dollars a ton.
Big increase.
From July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019, the fee will increase to forty-seven dollars a ton. Those are the major changes in this contract. The contract is a standard contract for each city and town. If we do not submit this contract signed, it was supposed to begin today, but the mayor got an extension of one day, we have to have it there for 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. If not, the cost of solid waste in North Providence will be sixty-seven dollars a ton until they receive a signed contract.
Councilman?
So, if the contract's due tomorrow one day, how long have you had it?
How long does it wa-
Why are we only getting one day to approve it?
I, you'd have to speak with someone. That was given to the mayor's office, I believe, in June, and then the attorneys had to look at it the last I know.
And then, okay.
Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Dick Fox, Chief of Staff, Mayor. Nothing changes in the contract. It's the same for every community. Naturally, to do our due diligence, we run all contracts by the attorneys. And this would be the old issue, we would've got it anywhere. We've got June 30th, right? Your next council meeting.
How many, how many tons are we tipping per year?
How many tons per day?
Yeah, I think he said per year.
Yeah. And then are we, are we-
It varies each day. You have three trash trucks out on the road. You know, it can be eighteen ton, it can be twenty-two.
But are we, you know, we implemented the recycling, are we decreasing-
That's totally different.
I know that, I know that's totally different. You know, is the town moving in the direction of the residents, reducing the amount that they're throwing away, so our tonnage per year that we're dumping is decreasing, or are we a community that's increasing?
Well, we keep trying to educate people, the more you recycle, the less the tonnage is, and we get paid for recycling, based on how much I recycle. The more we recycle, we get a rebate for it. I don't know if that's what they call it.
Because the recycling program's doing great, correct? The recycling program's doing great, correct?
We're doing well.
We're up to twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent. We should be at thirty-five. There are very few, there are two towns that are at thirty-five.
So, you don't know if we're decreasing our tonnage per year, or if we're increasing?
It fluctuates.
It fluctuates, okay.
Bob, did we, did we ever get rid of the apartment hoses?
The what, sir?
The apartment hoses, picking up-
No.
That, that's what, that's what I think hurts us. We've got to get rid of that and let them do their own, because they don't, they don't recycle.
Correct.
And so that, that makes our tonnage much higher, and that's why we're not get, we'll never get to that thirty-five percent.
Yeah, the larger ones do not recycle properly.
No.
And we've got a unit that's over in back of the high school, we've got one, two, five dumpsters in there, and we take very little recycling out of there. And we talk with property managers, I've offered to go and have meetings with them, with their residents, and they don't care. You have to understand, if you don't own that resident, it doesn't bother you. So you just do what you want to do. Whereas if you live there, and the effect of increasing your trash, or, you know, then you worry about it.
But, and on the other hand, if we don't pick up their trash anymore, and they gotta, they gotta pay for their own trash when they dump-
Correct.
Their rents are gonna go up, so now they're gonna care.
Right.
Right? So maybe-
Well, additionally, we're more than picking up.
Well, maybe we shouldn't do that anymore, Dick. Maybe we shouldn't pick it up? Really, I mean, just, why should we pay for, why should the rest of our people pay for people who don't care?
Councilman DiLorenzo?
Covered trash cans, would that help with the tonnage at all?
The what, sir?
If you had covered trash cans, like the recycling cans, would it help with the tonnage, would it bring it down a little bit? Just your thoughts about it, it's hard to give me an answer for that.
No, you have to understand, we're picking up everything, and we shouldn't be. I try to get it where you separate all the wood, where you let DPW pick that up, but we're still gonna pay thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven dollars a ton. But the thing is, you separated out of the flow, you get a better idea of what it's costing just for trash itself, solid waste.
Counselor?
Bob, you mentioned that there's two communities that currently hit the roughly thirty-five percent rate. Do you know which two communities those are?
Yeah, Warwick is one of them, but they pick up, they have their own trash drivers, the town does. East Providence is another one, they have MTG.
Okay.
Early on, East Providence was probably the first most effective one, and the gentleman that runs that, ran that program is now with MTG.
Thank you.
Counselor?
MTG runs a pretty good program.
Right.
I could tell you before, we started doing business with them, I can't even tell you how many calls we used to get for various reasons. They picked up, they're really dedicated, and they do a good job.
Bob, the wood-
It's up to the, it's up to the residents to do a better job, by the way, it's not up to them.
The wood, the tree stumps, is that all like being fumed and sold to like, say, Smithville P., or, you know, I hate to use them, I know there's other companies, but rather than send them to the landfill?
Yeah, what happens in North Providence, what we did was, we set up, I set up a program five years ago, where if there's metal on the sidewalk, we pick that all up, and then we sell it to one of the junkyards. Right now, we have a working agreement with K&amp;R, which is next to our facility. What he does is he'll put his dumpster there at no cost. We pay him, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars to tote it to a junkyard. If we make eight, nine hundred dollars, he gets his one twenty-five off the top. And there's all records on that, so people can see it. So, plastic, we started doing plastic, separate it from, the trash man won't pick it up, and we put a dumpster up here, and we were doing our, you're break-even. So then what happened is plastic's going down because oil is down. So there's no market in there. So we're losing money by truck separating it and trucking it up to circle recycling and Johnson.
Mr. President, I got one more question.
Go ahead.
So last year, I tried to do a recycling day in the town, but I guess we didn't apply, and we missed, you know, the Rhode Island Resource Recovery's date, the calendar's pretty full. Is that calendar, you know, applying for next year, is that now, when does that work? And how do we make sure our, our application's the first one in this year? So that way we can have that day next summer?
I can't, hey-
Concern in the community recycling day that Rhode Island Resource Recovery does, can we add it to this contract that we are guaranteed a day next year because we've never, we've never applied for one?
Yeah.
So-
No, you cannot add it to this contract.
Okay.
If you're talking recycling, you're talking, what, electronics, you're talking TVs?
Paint, you know-
Paint and things like that.
Everything, correct.
We have one scheduled. President Audio, I got wind that he wanted to have one, or the council, and I called Joe Rattella from Resource Recovery, and he scheduled, we got the first one for 2018. It'll be, I believe it's March 18th, up at the high school.
Okay.
And we'll be, and we'll be advertising that.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
I'll make a motion, we accept the contract.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, abandonment procedure. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion on ordinance sixteen dash zero one two relating to abandonment of highways, driftways procedure. Just state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Kelly Morris. I think most of you know me, I am the assistant solicitor here. I generally deal with zoning, planning, and sometimes building matters for the town. Right now, we are in the process of applying to you to rezone three pieces of property that were recently acquired by the town in the area of where the public safety building's going to be, including the Knights of Columbus property. Those, there's three lots that need to be rezoned. Also, there is a street called Plimpton Street, most of it is a paper street, there's a small portion that's improved, that we're going to be asking you to be abandoned. When I applied and met with Madam Clerk, I learned of an ordinance that you recently adopted. And I guess what I'm talking about tonight is kind of unintended consequences of sometimes ordinances. As you may know, the state really just requires you to notify a butters, just a budding, immediately a budding both sides of the street. You have one hearing. If you, if you find that, that piece of property ceases to be useful to the public, you can abandon that street, and half of it goes to one side, the property owner's on one side of that street, and half of it goes to the other side. I'm sure for very good reasons, you adopted this ordinance, which requires you to have two hearings, neither of which you can vote at, you have to vote at a third hearing, and then you can't actually enter the order for another thirty days. So with a month of advertising, three meetings, and then thirty additional days, we're talking five months before this, you know, what we're concerned about right now is Plimpton Street actually being abandoned by you. So this could create a problem. I did talk to Mr. Mooney earlier, and bids are gonna be going out in the fall, we're hoping to break ground in late fall. And even with, again, Madam Clerk working diligently to get this thing advertised, we're talking about your first hearing being in September. So what I'm proposing to you, I actually drafted an ordinance, which I can hand to you. I'm not trying to suggest that you should change this significantly, but what I'm suggesting to you is that you're the council, and you should be able to do whatever you want. So I am suggesting that you add a provision that says, notwithstanding these requirements of two hearings plus an additional hearing, you can waive that requirement. And I think just based on any particular matter that comes before the town, say it's a very important economic, a development that will provide economic, you know, positive economic results for the town, you want to have the ability to do that quicker than five months. And frankly, in this case, you know, the public safety building is a very important issue. If you want to abandon this quicker, you would have the ability to do that. So if I may, I'd just like to hand out, it's literally one extra provision, it's on the second page, it's in red, and it simply says that, notwithstanding what we already said about the procedure, you as a council can waive that requirement. It's up to you. I'm just bringing it to your attention that this could cause delay, not only with the public safety building, which is at issue now, but with any project that you want to see happen quicker than five months. You know, after the abandonment happens in five months, then an administrative subdivision plan has to get filed, the planner has to approve that, so now you're adding even a little more time onto it. So it's, you, my, my message to you is, you can do whatever you want, you're the council. If you don't like what's said at the first hearing, you can, you can say, we're gonna continue it to the next month. But don't hamstring yourselves. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We'd like to submit this for hearing in, for your September meeting.
Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Morrison?
And, Mr. Chairman, before you get to questions, in addition, I think the town is the only a butters here, am I correct on this?
For this particular matter, the town is the only a butters.
The only a butters.
Because it's gonna be the public safety building, it runs right through that property.
Does anybody?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we just, we're gonna have an ordinance meeting this week, 'cause there's gonna be a lot of stuff on this agenda, well, within the coming weeks, so. Does anybody, I'm gonna entertain a motion to put this into the ordinance committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. And I think we should be able to-
Question, just question, do I need to formally submit this, or is this a formal submission? Because it is in the proper form of an ordinance right now, what I've just given to you. It's up to you.
This is, this is fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four, auction of sale of earth and fill at the Future Police and Fire Complex. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on an auction for sale of earth and fill at the Future Police and Fire Complex. Just state your name for the record, sir.
I'm Mr. Michael Mooney, purchasing agent for the town of North Providence. As you can tell, there's some dirt and piles of dirt at the proposed new public safety complex. What we're doing is we're testing it, and we're testing it either to sell it, or keep it, or what have you. With the council's permission, we're hoping that you can give us the resolution, whatever it would take, to sell it. There's auctioneers already that you guys have appointed, and by doing so, this would expedite that once we see that we can sell it, it has value, we can.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mooney?
Yeah.
Councilman?
Dick, I thought we were gonna use that to fill the hole to do-
Well, some, some of it we can, and some of it we can't. By the way, in the event they have an auction, and they auction it off, and when, as I understand this, and we're not happy with what the price that they bid on, we don't have to take it.
No, I don't care about that, I'm just saying that-
Yeah, but no, they, there's, there's more than enough.
All right.
In fact, there's some in the back that we're gonna have to get out, too, so.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead. So, okay, I love the thought, but is there a way to, you know, I'm not asking to hold off, but have we talked to Gilbeam? Maybe they would-
We've, we've made a few requests for money, and it varies so much that-
No, no, what I'm saying is, we're building the two schools, so would they need that fill for the two schools?
Oh, no, I don't think they need that kind of fill. Most of that fill is pretty rough fill, if you go up there and look at it. There's a lot of, a lot of that fill came from the Lowe's project, and it's, a lot of it is like granite, and it's, it's not the kind of fill that you would use to do fill. I mean, if, you couldn't even use it like for, say, covering up the landfill. But what they do, there's a couple of ways to do it, from what they tell me, I'm not an expert. They grind it down into stone dust and all kinds of, we've heard that, anywhere from, what, a dollar fifty cents to three or four dollars, so we're trying to get the most out of it, and it'll be a plus for that, for that project then.
And then the auctioneer will advertise it, get it to people out there, and hold a sale. We're hoping that way they get the best price for it.
Again, keep in mind, we don't have to accept what they purchase it for, we could back off anything.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the sale of soil through the town auctioneer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Mr. President, just for your information, the mayor's not here, but he chose to be slinging hamburgers up at night.
I did see him there, so.
Okay.
He's excused. I want to go back to item number three, just to kind of move this process along, I'd like to make, entertain a motion to advertise for a public hearing in September.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number five, victory license for Bellamino Cavaco DBA Ronzio's Pizza. Discussion and possible vote with regard to the issuance of a summons to appear related to the renewal of victory license for Bellamino Cavaco DBA Ronzio's Pizza at 35 Smithfield Road that was continued to this date. Is there anyone here on behalf of Ronzio's Pizza?
Good afternoon, my name is Bellamino Cavaco.
Sir, I, I've just been informed that all your requirements have been met, so I'd have a motion to approve the victory.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, outdoor dining license. Town council will consider the approval of an outdoor dining license from Camp Nowhere LLC, DBA Camp Nowhere, 1838 Smith Street.
Ezra Spitzer Williams?
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Williams?
Mr. Williams, we're supposed to have a set of drawings, do you have a set of drawings?
I submitted this set of drawings.
Councilman?
First is, where is it going?
Right out front.
Do you plan on building a, like a porch type of deal?
No, it's, our plan is the four parking spots that we have in front of the restaurant, by the front door.
Yeah.
We're gonna fence those off with split, I think split rail, it's called fencing, and put picnic tables out there in front. And then on the side, we'd like to have games, like cornhole, like in the summer.
On the side of where?
On the, between our building and the plaza.
Okay, this is, so this is the front?
No, this is the front.
This is the front. And on the side here, you want a picnic, isn't that an egress, side to side, isn't that, it separates the two buildings?
I'm, I'm not sure. Our, our plan right away is to do the front, and then eventually do something on the side.
But, I'm sorry.
Yes, there's a submitted drawing, I think.
Mr. President?
Councilman?
Just to clarify, 'cause I am, I'm familiar with the building, the, the building that you occupy in the plaza next door are owned by the, the same owner, correct?
Correct, yeah, we have the same landlord.
And is he aware of your plans?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Councilman?
The fencing, so your patrons, will there be, there'll be outdoor seating, or is it just like a gap?
Outdoor seating, yeah, outdoor seating.
So, you'll be serving food out there, or is that just a gap, like, you know, people can go out there and hang?
We'd like to serve food out there, too.
Okay, so, well, if I was to drive by, am I gonna see that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's kind of like a rail fence?
It's like cattle fencing, it's like, I think four feet high, with just two beams that you can see through, it's not like stockade closed-off fencing.
And there's only two tables?
We'd like to put four picnic tables out front.
None on the parking lot side, or in the back?
Correct, just, just right, directly in front of our building. So on either end, it would come out.
'Cause the door in that you have shows the picnic tables in the front and the side.
Well, that's, I mean, we, I wanted to get approved today for everything, immediately we would like to do just the front, and then eventually, maybe next year, do the side.
So that would, so are you asking for the front, or the whole thing?
Well, if I could get approved, the whole thing, our immediate, what we're gonna do immediately is do the front, and then do the side when we're ready.
So it'd be two picnic tables on either side?
Correct.
Councilman?
I'll make a motion to approve that, just for the front, if it's possible. I don't know how you would write that, but for the front, I'm okay with it, if you want to approve it for that.
So we, what we could do is approve the front for the remainder of the summer, see how that works out.
Okay.
And then we can revisit this over the winter at some point going forward.
Okay.
So motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions?
The only thing, I'd just submit a decent drawing of what you want.
Please, I'll have somebody do like a rendering.
Chief? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, who's the name here?
Ezra. Ezra Spitzer Williams.
The only thing I want to say, Alice, we've been speaking of this, you have a little issue with the dumpsters there.
Yes.
All right, so I think, I know you've been notified, all right, that's a must, okay?
Yeah.
You keep that, and that should be fenced, also.
Okay.
Okay? That should be fenced, we want a stockade fence, so, listen, it's only for your business. We're a pro-business administration, so we're not looking to hurt you, but-
No, I know, I can tell.
I received a number of calls, I received a number of calls from Councilman Brady, so, and Councilman Steve DiLorenzo, so that's a must, check that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Item number seven, Palmerstry License. Town council to consider the approval of an outdoor dining license from Rhonda St. Angelo, DBA The Witch House located at 2034 and 2036 Smith Street. Just please state your name for the record.
Rhonda St. Angelo.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Miss St. Angelo? Does anybody have any questions?
I have a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Councilman Faola to approve, is there a second? Is there a second?
Not a second.
Seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, purchasing procedures. Purchasing agent Michael Mooney requests discussion and possible vote on the purchasing procedure for the town. Mr. Mooney?
Yes, Michael Mooney again, purchasing agent, town of North Providence. What I have here is, I know we're discussing ordinances and everything before, is three suggested changes that I'd like to make to the purchasing, it's in the charter now. We did some changes before, but there's a, there's a, there's two things that kind of hamstring our ability to, like, when we go out to bid, right now it says that, and I have the handout here to show you, that we can't stray from the time stated in the bid specifications to open bids. In the bidding process, occasionally we go out to bid and bidders request extensions, because there's a change order, or an item that we're requesting in the bid is hard to get, hard to get prices on. It's common, if we get more than one request, to lengthen the, the time to receive the bids, we do that. If you read the current way it's stated, it says, once the date's in the bid spec, the architects for the new public safety building said that we're preparing to go out to bid, that we'll go out to bid, and if need be, we can give an extension for bids, and I said, the way it's written now, I cannot. What I'd like to do is change it. Also, in the past, what we've had is that Middle Spring Avenue was a parking lot, there was a big construction project, and 10 o'clock was the bid opening, and I used to say, well, there's a problem, so I'm gonna give fifteen minutes longer for any strays. I think the purpose of it was, is so that once the bids were open, no late bids could be accepted. So I've made a couple of suggestions, and I made a suggestion here on that, and a couple of other statements in here, I've, I've also put in there, I can hand this off to someone who wants to have it, but.
Okay, Mr. Mooney, I'm gonna make a, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mooney, first of all? Because we're gonna be sending this to the ordinance committee as well.
Yes, right.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to send this to the ordinance committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been- Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman DeStefanis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Neighborhood Pox. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote on Neighborhood Pox. I put this item on the agenda for the simple reason of just getting a conversation started between the council and those involved with the land trust. I first want to start off by getting, giving credit to the land trust. I think we're extremely fortunate to have them in town. They do a wonderful, wonderful job. However, I've received some complaints about a community, or I want to say a pocket park, that is going in on Hobson Avenue. Although there's no, it's not definitely going in yet, there's been some discussion, and on the surface, it does sound like a great idea, when you have an empty space in the town, let's clean it up and make it into a park. But these are in-between residential homes, and if you stop and think about it, I'm not sure if I'd want that next to my house, because you're going to have people hanging out, you're going to have litter, and so forth. So, again, I'm not saying I'm totally opposed to these pocket parks. I just want the conversation to get started on how we can come to a consensus, whether it be the council has to approve these final plans before they're put into place, or so forth. There was also another community garden that was proposed on Greenville Avenue in District Three, and I received a, a lot of phone calls by people that were opposed to this as well, and, again, open space of land, on the surface, it does sound great to clean it up, and possibly put a park there, but the neighbors don't want people hanging in this park next to their house. I received word today that the community garden is not going to go in, the plans for that Greenville Ave community garden have been put off. So now they're looking to put up a possible fence around that area. So with that being said, if anybody has any questions for me, I'm open to that, but I'm going to make a motion to send this to the ordinance committee for a discussion on a possible ordinance to put in place, where the council would be signing off on these.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilwoman DeStefanis. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number ten, Rhode Island College Parking Lot. Council President Odiello and Councilman DiLorenzo request discussion and possible vote on Rhode Island College Parking Lot and the effect on surrounding neighborhoods. Residents may speak on this issue. I just want to start off by saying, I attended the first meeting that I was invited to, and I know Councilman DiLorenzo, I, myself, and the mayor attended the first meeting, Councilman DiLorenzo attended the second meeting, and I'll just say on the record that at the first meeting afterwards, I was assured that the gate would not be opened to Rhode Island College on Sheffield Avenue. I'm going to hear, Councilman DiLorenzo wants to speak on this issue as well, but our goal is to put a letter on the record from this council stating opposition in opposition to that parking lot expanding into our neighborhood, and I want to assure the people here that are here to speak on this, we're on your side, and we're in the fight with you, so, Councilman DiLorenzo? Before I get started, I also have a letter from Senator Frank Chacon that he asked me to read into the record on this issue, and please bear with me, I forgot my glasses tonight, so...
Would you read it?
I'll read it, it's okay. And this is to the Rhode Island College President, Dear President Sanchez, as the Senator for the seventh senatorial district, that includes Rhode Island College and the residents of Mount Pleasant Avenue and the Sheffield Avenue area, I voice my concern for the college's plan to expand the surface parking adjacent to the residents living in the only avenue and Mount Pleasant Mount Pleasant Avenue area. I side with Councilwoman Joanne Ryan and the residents that the college's previous master plan has no reference for pushing expansion. I urge the college to submit a new master plan to the city of Providence, allowing full transparency and hearings on the project. I remind the college that the new downtown and surface parking built above Fruit Hill Avenue created water runoff to Fruit Hill Avenue and Winnetka Tuckett Avenue. The runoff created numerous problems for the residents in the set areas. In an effort to remedy the problem, I held meetings with the town of North Providence Department of Transportation officials, elected officials from the area and Rhode Island College. North Providence Mayor Charles Lombardi and the Department of Transportation agreed to provide on-hand work to correct the flooding problem, but Rhode Island College refused to contribute the two hundred thousand dollars as their share. If not for the Rhode Island General Assembly providing a grant to the town of North Providence for the amount, problems would still exist. In the Providence Journal's article regarding Rhode Island College Parking Lot Expansion, the statement from the college was, "While considering impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods and making adjustments when possible, when it was time to make adjustments in my previous example, the college refused to be part of the project." "The residents of the areas surrounding Rhode Island College and I encourage the college to thrive and expand. However, they must also coexist and consider the surrounding neighborhoods when they undertake new construction projects, conduct community hearings that are complete and transparent about the scope of the project, allow residents to vet and offer alternative solutions, and consider and analyze the alternatives, and have additional meetings to bring forth the feasibility of the alternatives." "I once again urge Rhode Island College to halt the parking expansion until such time as necessary options can be studied and continue to meet with residents in the surrounding neighborhood. Sincerely, Frank A. Chacon III, State Senator, District Seven." I will provide, if you, if you all want a copy of this letter, I can provide that as well, I know Mr. Rhodes is... Anybody like to come to the microphone and speak? Just state your name for the record.
Regina Bell from Sheffield Avenue. Regina Bell, Sheffield Avenue. Good evening, Mr. President, council members. First of all, thank you for your support. We all thought we were coming here to ask for your support, so it's great to have your support, so thank you. My husband and I and our daughter have lived on Sheffield Avenue for thirty years. Sheffield Avenue is home to us. Many of our neighbors have lived in this area for decades, and so it's a neighborhood that's rich in commitment and spirit. We are gravely concerned about the expansion project at Rhode Island College, and I will share with you a summary that captures the essence of our concerns, and also is attached a resolution from Representative Ryan that, that was approved by the city, and embraces the, our concerns for sure. We also have a petition for Mr. Odiello. Ninety-two residents on Sheffield, only Ferncrest, Farnham, signed this petition over a course of two days. I think that speaks volumes about our concern. If this were not the summer months, I'm confident we'd have more than double that number. But our residents are really concerned about the expansion projects and the possible opening of gates on Sheffield, Farnham, and Ferncrest. We appreciate your support, and we hope that those gates can remain closed. Everything from safety to traffic to noise, and then some. I know other residents would like to speak, but I would like to close and say I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for listening with us tonight. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I need to read from my...
Can you just state your name for the record?
Jennifer Zerugian.
What is it again?
Jennifer, Jennifer Zerugian.
Thank you.
I have to read from my prepared notes. So, I will try to be brief. I'm here to discuss the impact specifically of the safety, how it's going to impact our streets if the Sheffield gate is opened, or if in the future, the end of Ferncrest or Farnham get open to the college. To me, there are two main issues to consider: the safety of our elderly children and pets, and vandalism and theft. So I looked up a few quick things on the internet, and I went to the National Traffic Safety Commission website, and I found a few things that were interesting. Pedestrians ages sixty-five and older account for nineteen percent of all pedestrian deaths. In twenty fifteen, one of five children under the age of fifteen that were killed in traffic accidents were pedestrians. So, how does this really, you know, pull together our issue tonight? The most interesting fact to me was that most pedestrian deaths occur in suburban neighborhoods, not on highways, not on secondary streets like Middle Spring Avenue or Smith Street. The streets in our neighborhood are very narrow, they're very old lots, old streets. There's a lot of on-street parking by our residents, which makes it even narrower and harder to traverse. The increase in traffic, if you open, if the college opens one of those gates, is going to make our streets very unsafe for all of the residents that live there. In addition to the traffic concerns, like I said, is vandalism and theft. If the road is open to the college, there's going to be increased traffic, not only from students and staff, but also from people who are visiting the college or attending events, sporting events, and other events that they have at the college. With having a gate open there, people will start to park on our streets, because it will be easier for them to get out at the end of an event, which is going to lead to more foot traffic, mostly in the evenings or after sporting events. The additional foot traffic, people that are just transient in and out of the neighborhood, is most likely going to lead to occasional acts of vandalism and theft in our neighborhood, so all of these things, I think, need to be considered by the college, and, again, thank you for your support to us on this, so we're just asking for help to really stop the current construction that they're doing now, to stop them from reducing the buffer zone between the college and the neighborhood. There was always, you know, a good growth of trees between us and them, they've knocked most of those trees down. And please, don't let them open the gate.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President and Council. Thank you for having us this evening. My name's Deirdre Couture, I live on Sheffield Avenue, and I've been there for about... My name is Deirdre Couture, I live on Sheffield Avenue. I've been there myself and with my children for about a decade, and I'm speaking to you this evening about the environmental concerns that we're all sharing with the last three years of heavy construction at Rhode Island College. There has been a significant change, we've all noticed, in the type of animals that we've been seeing in our neighborhood, and unfortunately, most recently, in the last several months, there has been an issue with rats in our area, which have never been present in the past, which brings grave to concern to most of us, who in our beautiful neighborhood have many gardens. We're all enjoying those things this summer and have been suffering with this issue, and it appears to be a direct result from most of this heavy construction that has been occurring on campus. As you can recall, during that first meeting you attended, we did request that they do an environmental impact study as to what the impact would be when they began this construction project on their campus. They indicated they would consider one, and yet, during the second meeting, dismissed the fact altogether. As you can imagine, with lots of heavy digging and building, there has been a displacement of lots of the animals within their campus, and some of the things we used to see, we see no longer, like foxes and deer that used to come into our neighborhood, no longer come, but we have lots of bunnies, and lots of groundhogs, and unfortunately, now, lots of rats. So, you know, in addition to losing lots of green space, we've also gotten lots of critters that we don't choose to have. So our concern is with this additional growth of asphalt, what will be next? And we ask you to assist us in having the college consider more the impact to others, instead of their personal growth and, and their efforts to be green, assisting us in to maintain the beauty of our neighborhood as we consider it beautiful to ourselves and to everyone else that appreciates walking our safe neighborhood as it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Cindy Quartino. I live on Farnham Avenue, in fact, right next to the gate. So, we've owned the house for eight years. I wanted to talk a little bit about the gates on those three streets that we're talking about. About thirty years ago, Judge Gianini and the president of Rhode Island College at that time, sat down, had a conversation, and had a gentleman's handshake to put those gates up. Before that, it was havoc, and it was such a wonderful exchange. There wasn't, you know, arguments, it was understood, and the neighborhood certainly flourished and changed. So with the opening of the gates, or even the, you know, the sort of considering opening the gates, really brings a lot of stress to most of the neighbors here. I also wanted to mention that about five or six years ago, Rhode Island College decided to put a two-way street right behind their stadium, which butts my house. And I came home one day and found thirty trees taken down. I was never notified, I didn't know what the heck was going on, so I finally called the school, and they said, well, we're putting a two-way street there. I called D E M, I said, this is wetlands, D E M said, no, it's not, the school said, no, no, it's not, I was shocked. All of a sudden, days later, everything stopped. So I called Patty Nolan at the school and said, what, what's going on here? And she said, well, the school realized that we wouldn't have enough space to have a two-way road, so they decided to stop this project after they took down all these beautiful trees. So my point is, they're moving forward and not really thinking, not really processing what they're doing to our environment. I thank you very much for supporting us, thank you very much for hearing me.
My name is Heather Dolan, and I am here because water runoff from the Rick Parking Lot project is a major concern for our neighborhood. In my neighborhood, there are six streets that all dead-end at the Rick campus, and they all run downhill from Smith Street. Now, I'm not an engineer or a hydro...
Ma'am, ma'am, where did you say you lived? I missed that.
I'm sorry?
What was your address? I missed that.
Farnham.
Farnham.
I'm not an engineer or a hydrogeologist, but I know what I see and experience as the last house on one of these dead ends. With every significant rainstorm, there is a river rushing down my street towards the green space on the Rick campus border. Now, it gets absorbed by the trees and the grass and all the green space, and then dumps into the wetlands, yes, again, the wetlands. But water is a tricky thing. Upset its natural flow, and it can be suddenly in a neighbor's basement a block or two away. Residents off Fruit Hill Avenue experienced water runoff problems from wrecked construction projects in the past, as per the letter from the senator. I am sure project engineers have planned to protect the campus from water issues, but I am dubious about their concern for my neighborhood, given their lack of transparency, communication, and cooperation. Please consider and sign the resolution. We need to see Rick revised master plan to understand the impact on our neighborhood. We are all very, very nervous about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lou Swizzwiz. I live, well, we start, I've been a resident of North Providence for the past forty years, thirty-eight of which are at my present residence at Ferncrest in the corner of Albert Street. Going to give a little bit of a history here, that when I bought my house, thirty-eight plus years ago, my wife, my wife Rose Lee, the owner at the time said to me, you have to promise that you don't move that rock. Now, if you ever go down my street, you'll see a big white rock in the corner. And I was kind of puzzled by why he was concerned about that, and weeks later, I'm out doing work, and had residents, longtime residents, stop by, and they all kept saying the same thing, whatever you do, you can't move this rock. And I came to learn that that rock was... And I came to learn that that rock was called a meeting rock. In our neighborhood, we don't have curb stones. We don't even have sidewalks in many cases. People stroll down the street. It's the kind of neighborhood I wanted to have. Trees everywhere. Rick is a half a block from my home. I would never know it because there were rows of trees. Today, if you walk down Ferncrest, you will know that that's not the case. But nevertheless, what I had learned is that people would leave mass on Sunday or during the week, they would go to that rock and they would talk. And it soon came to me that that rock actually embodies the spirit, the heritage, the culture of that town. That is, that it's a place of quietness where people could have conversations. If those folks were still living and they would try to go to that rock today to speak, they would have a difficult time. The noise that emanates from that Rhode Island College is amazing. They put in a recreational building, or they actually refurbished a recreational building, and the air conditioning systems point to our neighborhood. It is loud. That noise is an uninvited guest in our bedrooms, in our kitchens, in our living rooms. They don't care. There's also the power plant that's in the center, same problem. So what has happened is that what we're looking for, where the neighborhood is looking for quietness and peace, that has been taken away from us. So besides the gate, that is certainly an issue, and they can have all the promises of the world. It's the infringement of what they're doing right now. A perfect example of this is take a ride down Fruit Hill Avenue, especially down Hennessy Street. At Hennessy Street, you will see that there are homes that were there, they're no longer there. They're no longer on our tax roll. They were taken away. What is there are a couple of parking lots. And actually, if you look a little further, it seems to be a dirt parking lot, which probably will turn into an asphalt parking lot soon. Just guessing, don't know for certain. Also, you'll notice that all those trees that were there, they're gone. And if you go down a little further, you will see in a building, a maintenance building. And in the back of this building, which faces Fruit Hill Avenue, there is an abundance of furniture and other debris that is just sitting there. And I say, what can the residents of North Providence who live on Fruit Hill Avenue across from this here, what they must be thinking? That when they wake up in the morning, that's what they see. So that exemplifies Rhode Island College's attitude towards its neighbors. I don't think they really care. They're very proud to point out that they are one of the ten top schools that received the award this year for inner campus beauty and greenery. But the residents that surround that are now bear to, I mean, excuse me, are now have to bear the consequences of that because they're moving those buildings out. The auxiliary buildings, the buildings that they don't want on campus are being moved out. That means I now see the parking lot. I can now see the, I, excuse me, I can now hear the noise. I can see the parking lights. This is what concerns me. The gate may, there are ways to remedy the gate. I'm not concerned about that. I know we can take care of not having a gate there or gates there. But what does concern me is that they have no concerns. So in ending here, they're not here this evening, but our neighbors, Rick and Mary Ann, several years ago, decided to take their garage and turn it into a living space. And they went to the town hall and did what they had to do. And they were told that they had to notify, I believe it was within a radius of a hundred feet, the residents of their change that they were making, and that there would be a hearing, and if anybody opposed this modification that they were doing, that they would give the people an opportunity to do that. I thought it was kind of silly, and in fact, if you look at what they have done, it actually has improved, the house was nice, but it's actually improved the house. It's nicer, and it seemed like a silly thing. But yet, we have people who are doing much more damage to our property that we didn't get an opportunity to have a hearing. Now, when we talked to Mr. Gingerella, Vice President Gingerella, at the meeting, he told us that, he spoke to the people of the city of Providence and the city of North Providence, which goes to show how much he knows, that they approved what was going on. He was not able to provide us with any details of what that approval was. So I asked the council to find out if anybody here, who is, has the authority to make that approval, if it had been made. We can only go by what he said. And if there is someone here in town that does make these approvals, that the town council make an ordinance that prohibits anybody from the town approving any changes at Rhode Island College unless its residents have had an opportunity to have that hearing, just like Rick and Mary Ann had to do for an innocuous improvement to their home. All right, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the North Providence Town Council with the opportunity given to its citizens concerning a very quality-of-life-changing situation. I would like to address Olney Avenue. Olney Avenue has developed into a major cutoff between Fruit Hill and Smith Street, almost like Cathedral Avenue used to be back in my Rhode Island College days. And the traffic that goes by there, it has turned into a dumping ground of people that make quick purchases up at the package store up the street, various Dunkin' Donuts, food wrappers, and it's, the litter is, it's even, it's very hard for my wife and Sharon and the person, people, family that live across the street to keep up with. Also, the road itself, as you're all aware of, I'm sure, empties out into Smith Street, and that decline is a very dangerous decline, especially once it gets slippery. This is the third year, last year was another example that Olney Avenue was going to be repaved. It was, it was even in the valley breeze, and to our dismay, it wasn't touched. And right now, it looks like a pretty ugly quilt. What we'd like to see happen is speed bumps go into Olney Avenue. I know for a fact that I was on Melrose Ave in Providence recently, which used to be a thoroughfare, quite like what we have now on Olney. And the speed bumps there, in addition to the stop signs, really just slows everything right down, and it would alleviate some of the traffic issues that are, that we have to face with both ourselves and our children's safety. I do want to, I do want to say that I'm very pleased tonight that we have other folks here that are waiting to speak from the Fruit Hill Neighborhood Association and the East Providence Environmental Council, of which I'm a member. And so with that being said, I'd like to bring up some of those folks so they can contribute to this discussion that we're having tonight. And once again, thank you very much to the town council for allowing us to address you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank, first of all, I'm Angelina Phillips from 101 Olney Avenue, and I would also first like to thank the council for giving us opportunities to voice our opinions and our views. I would like to point out to the council that just a few years ago, the Fruit Hill Neighborhood was named as one of the best neighborhoods in the country by Rhode I, not Rhode I, well, Rhode Island Monthly also mentioned us, but also by This Old House Magazine. And that was published on the internet. And in my opinion, I would like to see the neighborhood kept as it is. It's a wonderful walking neighborhood. It's a wonderful family neighborhood. I live on Olney, and it's really nice to see people of residents of the area walking dogs, children, and strollers. And I think opening those gates to those side streets would destroy the whole unity of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter?
My name is Ruth DiMaglio. I live on Sheffield, and I've been on Sheffield for the past thirty-three years. And my concern is if the gates are open at the end of Sheffield, also on the other streets, Farnham and Ferncrest, it's likely that the gates will be open at some point because this parking lot expansion is going from thirty-seven cars to a hundred and fifty cars. And the expansion runs along the Rick border within ten feet of homes that live along that border. So the issue that concerns me most is the traffic that will be leaving the parking lot onto Sheffield, Farnham, and Ferncrest.
Thank you.
And apparently, they started this morning. They started to, to build the parking lot. So if anything can be done to get in order to cease and desist until it's clarified as to whether or not they're even authorized to expand this parking lot, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peg Nadachi. I've lived on Sheffield Avenue. In October, it will be fifty years. I lived there when the state home and school was open, and the traffic on that street was unbelievable. This was before the gate went up. The gate went up with the help of Judge Giannini and the president, which I believe might have been Dr. Gage.
John Nizir.
Oh, John Nizir, okay, John. All right. And it made a great difference. The thing is, there's parking on both sides of the street, and that can be done day or night in the town, except when you get down to the Providence end. And if you need a rescue, fire truck or anything to get up and down the street, sometimes it's very difficult. So I thank you for your help tonight, and hopefully we can keep it closed. As far as the college goes, if they have not filed a master plan or an amendment to their master plan, they shouldn't be doing anything. And I know that because I've just, I work, I work at Brown in the real estate office over there. And we have master plans, and anytime you want to do something, you've got to clear it with the city. And when I asked him, Vice President Gingerella, the first night, he said he knew nothing about a master plan. So now he does, and he has to stick by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Chief?
Mr. President, like most of you that live in, represent that area, the mayor's office has received many calls from some of the people who are in this room right now. And I just want to assure them that the administration is in support of their wishes of not opening any of those gates. We've been in communication with Senator Chacon. He knows our feelings. We talked with him a number of times. I have personally talked with him. We spoke with a couple of officials from Rhode Island College, and they're basically showing us that none of those gates are being opened. But that's not coming from the administration. That's what they're telling us. I think they've been a little vague in what they're doing there, and I think that's the problem that these people, residents, are having there. I would also suggest that they contact their representatives from Providence because a lot of the work that's being done there is on the Providence side of the campus. And I suggest maybe you...
I don't have to.
Okay. Like I said, that, listen, power is in numbers, and where the administration is in support of your wishes, so I want you to mention that very quick. As I stated earlier, the mayor isn't here tonight because they had policemen, police officers night out nationally, and he was slinging hamburgers down at nine o'clock. But he asked me to extend this message to all of you, we're in support of none of those gates being open. I can't even believe that they would even consider opening those gates because that, I can't see them putting a road along, like first the baseball field, then it goes into the track and the soccer field, as I recall it. But I heard a lot of conversation tonight about a Judge Giannini, whose house, I don't want to say this because I remember when they closed that gate, and I'll give you an idea how old I am. I'm older than dirt, by the way. And I could tell you, his house, as I believe, is half in North Providence and half in Providence. And I remember when that was going on because I've been in politics since 1973. And it was done around that time when they, or later, when they closed those gates. So that's been an issue. In the conversations that I had with certain members of the college, I expressed our feelings about them cutting down the trees, and they said that any trees they cut down, they were going to put up some kind of a border of trees. Again, that's what they're saying, not the town is saying. It's their property, so, but I guess the purpose of me even saying anything here tonight is to assure you that we will be supporting the residents of that neighborhood. And I just can't conceive of them opening any of those gates. They said they're not going to open them. But like I said, they've been a little vague, so, but we'll take them at their word. And as far as the runoff goes now, there are certain regulations with DEM that you have to retain the water that is on your property. So I don't know if you noticed some of the new businesses that go in and put parking lots in now, they have to dig down three or four feet, fill it with gravel, so any water runoff has to be maintained on their property. In fact, Lowe's down on Mineral Spring and Douglas, when they built that, the builders called the administration who went down there, and that entire parking lot has all these massive tubes to retain their own runoff so it doesn't runoff onto the main streets. So hopefully, they're the state, they comply with the rules of DEM, and I don't know that that will be a problem. And I basically think most of that runoff will probably run down to Mount Pleasant Avenue and not Fruit Hill Avenue. I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer or surveyor, but it looks like where they're working right now, that runoff might run toward Mount Pleasant Avenue and not Fruit Hill Avenue. We have enough water on Fruit Hill Avenue already, by the way. And as far as the gentleman stated about something being okayed by the town, I don't know anything about that. I don't know what projects he's, what project he was talking about. But if being okayed is that they comply with whatever the zoning and regular, and planning regulations are, and in that sense, it would have been okayed if they went before Planning Board, Zoning Board, or the council for any zone changes. So in conclusion, I would just want to say, the administration, and I've been asked to say this on behalf of mail and body, we're in support of whatever your wishes are there.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. As I stated earlier, I want to thank my colleagues. We've all kind of been working to try and get something done. Councilman DiLorenzo. I actually want to state also, Councilwoman Brady was in Ireland and actually called me on this issue. I said, Alice, enjoy your vacation. You can handle when you get back. She called me when she was away as well. I think this council tonight needs to make three motions. One, sending a letter on behalf of the town council stating our opposition to opening all three gates on the record on Farnham Street, Ferncrest Boulevard, and Sheffield Avenue. The second motion would be to set up a meeting between us and Vice President Gingerella to get the actual story on what exactly is going on. And I'd also like to, I know Mr. Rhodes had spoke to me earlier, he said he's going to give, provide us with the resolution that the Providence Town Council, Providence City Council passed, and I'm going to instruct our legal counsel to draft a North Providence version of that council as well to be heard at the September meeting. So I'd like to entertain a motion to send a letter to the Rhode Island College and this council. Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Y'all has have it? I'll get to it in a second. Farnham, Ferncrest, and Sheffield. I'd also like to entertain a motion for our town clerk to draft a letter and send it to Vice President Gingerella, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, and any other officials at Rhode Island College that would be involved in this project to meet with myself, Councilman DiLorenzo, Councilwoman Brady, and any other, we represent District Three and Council Lodge, and any other council members that would like to come, and of course, the administration, so we can get a straight answer on to what is going on with this project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Fiola. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Y'all has have it? And third, I'd like to instruct our legal... And third, I'd like to instruct our legal counsel to draft a Town of North Providence version of the Providence resolution, once Mr. Rhodes provides us with that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it? Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Okay, item number eleven. Okay, item number eleven, Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center. Council President, Council President Odiello and Councilman Amerigi request discussion and possible vote on a formal written agreement between the Town of North Providence and the Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center. I'm going to be removing this item from the agenda since there is not an agreement in place. However, I'd like to make a statement before I do so. I put this item on the agenda last Tuesday, knowing that the attorney the council has hired would be setting up a meeting with the administration's attorneys on this Monday, hoping that they would come to an agreement. And I would then present the council with that agreement tonight. Never once would I intend for this council to be voting on an agreement they would be receiving the same night. Anyone that's served on this council with me knows I don't do that, and shouldn't expect me to do that in the future. So if that was ever a question, that wasn't going to happen. I would actually want to give us a week or so before we review it. Then we would then vote on it to send it to the board for their final approval. And the agreement basically piggybacks off the initial meeting, which was sent up by Councilman DeStefanis. And it took that, and it would take that a step further. Councilman Amerigi reached out to me, and he said that he wanted to just take all the proposals and put everything that we've agreed upon into writing, and basically form a contract. And that's really was my only intention. However, once this matter is resolved, because now that the conversation has continued, it does have to take place in executive session, because there is pending litigation, there's personnel issues, and labor contracts. So the attorney advising this council on this matter has advised us to put this in executive session. I also know that there were some issues with the wording of this agenda item, so I think Councilman Amerigi, being an attorney, can probably explain why it was worded this way. Councilman?
Thank you. As President Odiello already mentioned, I think the operative word in this agenda item is "possible." There was going to be a possible vote on a written agreement. We didn't know what the form of said written agreement might be, whether it be a contract, a dismissal stipulation, because there is pending litigation. Could take various forms, but we wanted to get it on the agenda and word it properly, so we could at least address it. But as President Odiello stated, I don't think it was his intention to ambush anybody. We'd obviously, our intention was to hopefully have something in place tonight, which we don't. That being said, you know, part of the impetus for me suggesting putting this in writing, and I mentioned this to most, if not all, of the council members after the last full council meeting, was that there's been a lot of hard work going on by ourselves and our colleagues and the administration and the board from the senior center. And there was a meeting that was spearheaded by Councilman DeStefanis in part. And at the last full council meeting, there were allegations made going back and forth between the senior center and certain members of this board and the administration as to what was said at that meeting. So it dawned on me, again, as an attorney, as an elected official, that as the legislative body for this town, we need to conduct business and hold ourselves to a higher standard. And part of doing so is putting things in writing, so that there's transparent, and there are not these accusations flung back and forth as to what was said and what wasn't said at meetings. I think being the legislative body of the town, the administration, I think we all hold ourselves to the highest of standards. And I think going forward, hopefully, if this is resolved, it's done in writing and done through, you know, formal legal channels.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Councilman?
So early you stated that there was negotiation going on. Who's negotiating?
Attorney DeSisto is speaking with Anthony Galone and Tony Trainey.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to remove this item from the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juasty. There be no questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it? Item number twelve, unregistered vehicles. Councilman Amerigi requests discussion and possible vote on the parking of unregistered vehicles on Charlotte Street. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this is a longstanding issue, and being new to the town council, I unfortunately have been aware of it, basically in the almost four years that I've lived in the Maryville area. It really came to a head, or it's snowballed over the last six months or so. So what we have is, behind the strip of property owned by National Grid, where the police substation used to be off of Charlotte Street, there's a portion of Charlotte Street that's a one-way street. Directly adjacent to that, there's a business called Jimmy's Auto Sales. Now, at various points throughout the day, as early, in my eyes, I've seen it as early as 8:00 AM, Jimmy's Auto Sales starts moving vehicles off their lot, and they start parking it on the property owned by National Grid. That creates a handful of problems. The most obvious is that being a one-way street, and the size of some of the vehicles, it's creating a safety issue. People come flying up and down this road. There's a lot of children in the neighborhood. The other issue is, obviously, it's an eyesore. The neighbors, it is essentially a residential neighborhood, and the neighbors have, almost on a daily basis, been complaining to me that they have to stare at these vehicles with no license plates, sitting on a strip of grass, and basically being shuttled back and forth throughout the course of the day. Finally, the other issue is that other residents, there's a little condo slash apartment complex there. I think they're taking some initiative from Jimmy's, and they're parking their cars on that grass as well. From what I understand, this has literally been being addressed for years. I know Mike Conavalli has been out there. I know the administration has addressed it. The police have been out there, and the owner proprietor of Jimmy's basically says, "Okay, I won't do it anymore," and then he does it. I actually drove by there Monday morning in preparation for today, and actually after work yesterday. He had fifteen cars on the grass by 9:00 AM. What he's told us on multiple occasions is, when he needs to get a car in the garage, he moves one car off the lot. Fifteen cars at 9:00 AM isn't exactly commensurate with that line of reasoning. So I actually want to make two motions tonight. First motion that I wanted to make was to send a letter to National Grid informing them that both registered and unregistered vehicles are being parked on their property, and basically just to inform them of that, because being owners of that property, and this is not part of the motion, but being owners of that property may be in their purview to address that.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by, do you want to do that one first?
Yes.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And the second motion? Mr. President, the second motion I wanted to make is, with the help of legal counsel, I reviewed the zoning ordinance for the Town of North Providence. And this isn't the motion, but this is the impetus for the motion. It seems to me that Jimmy's Auto Sales is actually in violation of multiple sections of the zoning ordinance, most specifically Section 313, which regulates how many cars can be on a commercial lot, and also as to when and where they can be. So I'd like to make a motion to refer this matter to zoning enforcement officer to determine if Jimmy's in violating any section of the North Providence zoning office and report back to this council at next month's meeting. And if there are any violations, to cite them as appropriate in the meantime.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions?
Just one.
Councilman?
Has, so I'm taking it that you have those residents on Charlotte Street complaining about the cars?
Charlotte, Hurtis, Roosevelt, yes.
Has anyone contacted the owner of Jimmy's to have a conversation with them?
Not only the administration, the neighbors, the police.
Has Conavalli gone out and cited them?
Conavalli, multiple times, yes. I don't believe he's cited them, because part of the issue, just to clarify, is that because he's parking it on National Grid property, the town doesn't have the authority to do anything. That's why it's probably a zoning issue, because there are zoning ordinances that regulate where the cars could be put.
But I thought you couldn't have unregistered vehicles on any piece of property?
I believe that's true.
So why, just out of curiosity, I guess that's a question for Mike Conavalli.
I believe it would be.
What would hinder Mike? Why would Mike turn around and say, "You know, it's National Grid. I can't touch it"? If it's unregistered, it can't be there. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Me, being a former guy, me being a businessman, the second motion you made sounded like you might be hurting that guy. So I, just from what I heard, maybe reading in between the lines, it sounded like you might hurt him for what you said the second.
I think my intention and the intention of the council, hopefully at large, if they vote to agree with that, is not to hurt him, it's to get him to comply with the zoning ordinances. I mean, this literally, from what I understand and talking to the police, Mike Conavalli, the administration, has been going on for years. And I don't mean a year, I don't mean two years, I mean three, four. And he's basically giving the town the runaround. He's saying, "Okay, I'll stop tomorrow," and then he doesn't stop. I don't want to hurt business either, but there's children, there's elderly, there's pets, and I just think it's a dangerous situation. And maybe that's what it's going to take to bring him before us and get him to at least comply with the law as it exists.
Hold on. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Okay. If the record shows five aces and one may. Okay. Item number thirteen, parking lot behind Maryville School. Councilman Amerigi requests discussion and possible vote regarding the maintenance of the parking lot located behind the Maryville School.
This one's simple, and I'm actually happy there's somebody from the administration here tonight. Maybe they can help us without us having to start sending letters back and forth. I'm sure Councilman DeStefanis and potentially Councilwoman Brady have heard some of the same issues. But since Maryville School has been closed, the parking lot in the back of the school has become somewhat of a hangout for neighborhood kids. There's now perpetually being bottles thrown in the shrubbery, food wrappers, coffee cups. What you would imagine would be there in an empty lot that can be utilized by the neighborhood teenagers, most likely. I have been in contact with the DPW. They did actually send out trucks on a couple of occasions. The issue is, is that not being on a set schedule, it's required me, every time I get a call, to then call somebody else. I'm wondering maybe if Chief Fassa can speak on this, if perhaps we can either set up something with either Jim Feroli or the DPW, where they do a run-through even once a week.
Call DPW and make that a regular stop a couple of times a week. I've never received any calls about that issue. But I would caution us about putting any, like, top box in there or anything, because the plans in the future to sell that building, and if you take up the parking lot, whatever that building's going to be, they're going to need parking. The building might come down eventually. I don't know. Then you could seriously look at something in the recreation-type area. But at this point, depending on the condition of the building and what it would cost for someone, because we're not going to do it, to renovate it and purchase it. I'm sure it would be some kind of a business, and they would require parking. But as far as cleaning it up, I'll be happy to make that call tomorrow morning and get them on a regular schedule, maybe a couple of times a week, to just police it and pick up whatever debris is there.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to do that.
Maybe we can have the police do a D-run over there, too.
Yeah, they could do a D-run there. I'm sure it's probably younger kids over there. I don't know if they're hanging around.
It seems like it from what the neighbors don't know.
I really don't know. I haven't really received any complaints about it, like, you know, kids having pop potties or anything like that, anything serious. But if it's just a debris situation, we'll have a check, though. I'll do that in the morning.
So not to interject, but are there, so there's no garbage cans there? There's none?
I got to tell you the truth. I don't know. I really don't know. There might be some from recess or something, but for me to say yes or no, I'd be lying. I don't, you know, I really don't know. But we'll make provisions for a couple of trash containers to be put there. That's not a big issue, as long as they use them. That's the big issue. So I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. I'm satisfied with that. I don't know if anybody wanted to make a motion, but...
Item number fourteen, fire pits. Councilwoman Fiola requests discussion and possible vote on fire pits.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every year, I'm sure, some of you may get the same calls as I do. I get calls asking if fire pits are legal in the Town of North Providence. I was always under the impression, if you're using it for cooking, they were legal. The ordinance for fire pits, I'm going to read it. Outdoor burning of all kind is prohibited unless a permit or other proper authorization is obtained. So I'll give you a quick little story. I had a resident contact me this summer. He built a fire pit in his backyard so he can relax after work. Lights a fire. One of his neighbors contacts the fire department. The fire department comes and tells him, as long as it's good for cooking, use it for cooking, it's okay. So he went and bought a grate to put on it. A week later, lights the fire up again. A different crew came from the fire department and told him, "No, against the law. Can't have it." So theoretically, if I'm cooking on my grill, is that against the law? I don't know. So, well, it could be, theoretically. So what I'm asking is if we can forward this, a motion, in form of a motion, send this to ordinance, so we can get clarification on this ordinance. Invite the fire marshal, fire chief in, so we can further discuss it. So ordinance could be clear, so everyone's on the same page.
Motion's been made by Councilman Fiola. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions?
Oh, Mr. President, I do.
Councilman?
So, Councilman, I had a similar situation about two years ago in District Two. And the former fire chief explained to me that the permit is for, like, open burning. Like if you were gonna...
Bonfire?
Something like bonfire, if you had, like, hedges or something like that. I guess they used to do that in the past, where they used to burn there, leaves and stuff. And I asked him then, because I'm not opposed to fire pits. And I said, "Well, if you have a permit, why couldn't we permit for fire pits? So the fire department knows who has them, who doesn't have them. You can go out, you know, I fill out a permit to have a fire pit. You come out, you inspect it, you tell me it's, you know, okay."
I would also like to add, I mean, they sell them at Lowe's.
Correct.
But we can't use them in North Providence.
So, you know, Mr. President, can I add that when that discussion takes place, that we possibly look at permitting, you know, our residents to be allowed to use open fire pits?
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it? Item number fifteen, permanent speed bump on Lojai Boulevard. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on request by residents... on request by residents and petition for a permanent speed bump on Lojai Boulevard. Councilman?
Mr. President, I've been approached by residents who live on Lojai Boulevard concerning traffic overflow that occurs from either side, you know, Charles Street or Mineral Spring, and they use that section of the town to cut through to alleviate the traffic on Mineral Spring Avenue. I informed the resident, Mr. O'Neil, apologized as he couldn't be here this evening. But I informed Mr. O'Neil that, you know, we could have a plastic speed bump put in. He had conversations with the residents on the street, majority of them want a permanent speed bump. And if you're on Lojai Boulevard, there are two visible basketball hoops in front of residents' homes. So during the day, there are a group of kids on either side of the street playing basketball. And, you know, a car comes around the corner to come onto Lojai, and they're hitting speeds at twenty, twenty-five miles. The dad was there talking to him, people were speeding up and down the street. I also understand that our DPW director was on the street repairing a sinkhole, and he couldn't believe, and again, I don't want to speak for him, but he couldn't believe about the amount of traffic and speeding that was occurring on the street. Our police department has done D-runs there for us, and I do appreciate it. But I informed Mr. O'Neil that he had to get a petition signed, so he walked Lojai Boulevard and the adjacent streets and provided us with the petition. So I make a motion. So I, well, before I make the motion, does the petition suffice, or does this have to go to ordinance? Councilman, legal counsel has just informed me that that is fine, so it's, you have discretion. So I make a motion to, based on the resident's petition, to place a speed bump on Lojai Avenue. Along with that motion, I ask that the administration, DPW, I assume is going to install it, that they contact the residents on the petition, because there is a section on the street where the speed bump goes, and it has the least amount of impact to those who live, who would be living next to it. So I just ask that DPW coordinate with the individuals who sign the petition. But I make a motion to install the permanent speed bump on Lojai Boulevard.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DiStefanis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions?
People on the street want a speed bump, but I think many will prove this to be true, that on a number of occasions this year, while we're putting up speed bumps, we're getting calls that they don't want speed bumps. And those are portable speed bumps that could be taken out. So, I believe it was, what was that, Went Scott Lean was the best example? Well, Went Scott, we put two permanent speed bumps, and the mayor and I personally contacted every resident on the street. We walked that street. And the week after we put the permanent speed bumps up, we were inundated with calls that they didn't want to, from the people on the street and also people who use the street.
And the woman.
And by the way, by the fire department, because if you get a rescue squad going down there, and they're working on someone in the rescue, and you hit those speed bumps, naturally you got to slow up before you go over them. And there was a few cars that bottomed out. Those were real speed bumps that we had on Went Scott Lean. So if you now, you could drive over them, it's just like a bump in the road.
Funny part of that story on Went Scott Lean was the woman that pushed for them, fought for them.
Yeah, she moved out.
She moved out.
She moved out. She said she couldn't take it anymore. And be careful where you put it. And again, like, I'm not in opposition to putting the speed bump there. Make sure you know where you're putting it, because when you put it in front of someone's house, every time someone hits that speed bump, they get a thump in their house. So, there's some good things for speed bumps, there's some bad things. And also on the basketball, backboards, it's against the law to have backboards up on the sidewalk and the kids playing in the street.
Zoning, I believe.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman.
Hey, by the way, you're talking to someone who was only preg ramming with the street on Federal Hill, so, but.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, town and North Providence tax rates. Councilman DiStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on any and all information pertaining to the town and North Providence tax rates. Councilman?
Mr. President, I put this on the agenda this evening. I've been approached by residents in my district. We also had a resident here twice in the last few months who wanted to know how the tax rate was going to be factored. I think his name is Mr. DeChecco, DeChico. So, to be honest with you, I was asked by some residents recently, and I couldn't answer the question. So, the first thing is, I read in the breeze that the tax rate's going to be twenty-six fourteen on new town communication. So, we went from twenty-seven ninety-eight, correct? To twenty-six fourteen, and the tax increase was twenty or thirty cents. Which one? Twenty-eight? Okay, so that brings us down to twenty-eighty, twenty-five eighty-six. How did we get to twenty-five eighty-six? I understand that we went through the reevaluation. I understand that when we were doing the budget, that the tax rolls weren't certified yet. And I understand in our budget process, we budget the expenditures. But our tax rate was set, and no information was provided concerning the results of the reevaluation and how the tax rate was formulated. So we're sitting at twenty-six fourteen, and the other question that I'm asking this evening is simply this. I held a finance committee meeting, you know, I was not in favor of the tax increase, and I voted against it. And the biggest reason why I voted against it was, one, I wasn't informed regardless of what anyone says. But number two, I couldn't get a clear indication from anyone as to what the actual tax increase would generate. So at twenty-eight cents in the finance committee, it was five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's, so if you look at twenty-seven ninety-eight to twenty-five eighty-four, that's three point nine million dollars, when you factor that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So on one side of the equation, was it a four million dollar equalization? And on the other side of the equation, does twenty-eight cents generate five hundred and fifty thousand? Was it factored? Huh? Okay, but that, so that's my, what's it going to generate? Yeah, come on.
You know, this budget has been adopted. You can't raise more money than you need.
And I understand that.
Okay. I think that Tom has done his best to explain this to you. Obviously, you still don't understand it, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Dick, hold on there. He stood there that night, and he gave us estimates, but he had not yet had all the information.
Well, I will make this suggestion. I will be happy tomorrow morning to set up an appointment for you, right? I think a buck represents about one point five million. So twenty-eight cents would be around three fifty or so, hundred thou, three hundred fifty thousand. The tax levy has been set, no one ever collects a hundred percent. I think we got the residential property at ninety-eight, the commercial at ninety-five, and by the way, I'm just talking off the top of my head, but it's set in stone. And the car tax is usually the biggest culprit, at about eighty-six to eighty-seven percent.
Okay, so.
So that's where the spread comes from. But again,
I don't want the information.
Rather than me try to explain it to you like the finance director would, or the tax assessor would, and me risk the possibility that I say something wrong here, I'll be happy to make an appointment for you with Tom Kane and Maria Valley, and you can sit down, take an accountant with you.
No, no, I.
No, take an accountant with you. So then when you walk out, you'll say, "Yes, I know what it is".
Can I just make the motion?
You can make any motion you want. I'm not on the council.
I make a motion that we send a letter to the tax assessor, that the tax assessor provides us the information concerning the reevaluation. You know, what went up on average, what went down. I'm sure he received a presentation from them. And then secondly, how we got from twenty-seven ninety-eight to twenty-six fourteen.
Okay, a motion's been made to send a letter to Tom Kane, our tax assessor. By Councilman DiStefanis. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? Maybe a none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Just for your information, residential property went up, condominiums went down, and cars are cars, you know. A two hundred thousand dollar home. Would that increase, that twenty-eight cent increase, without the reevaluation, though, would be almost flat out, no tax increase, because what you would get on the cars if you had a ten, fifteen thousand dollar car.
Chief, that was residential, that you just said?
Residential, yeah.
Residential, actually.
Yeah, if it was a two hundred thousand dollar home, without the reevaluation.
Right.
Like, my taxes went up approximately four hundred dollars, so you can't use me as that. But if it was, no revaluation this year, and it was a twenty-eight cent tax increase, would be a flat, basically a flat tax rate.
Have the bills gone out yet? Have the bills gone out yet?
They've gone out.
Okay, because I've been getting calls.
Me, too.
I believe they went out, I believe they went out yesterday. I wasn't in, so I can't tell you, but they're going out.
I also would like to state, this doesn't address your concerns, but we had talked about this today. The General Assembly had mentioned possibly changing our fiscal year to the, for the cities and towns to pass our budgets after they pass their budget, their budget. And, you know, not today, but at some point, I think we might want to take a look at that, because that would make things a lot easier on us as a town.
And again, that might serve us the state well, but it might not serve us too well, because most of the fiscal years start on July first. I remember when I went on the council, our fiscal year ended like in either March or April. And we went for four years, moving it up one year at a time. That becomes a problem. And like I said, there'd have to be a little more research. Listen, fiscal year is the fiscal year.
Right.
But once you start doing that, and like the rest of the country or whatever is like on June 30th, ends the fiscal year, July 1st, it causes some problems. Nothing major, but I know we moved, changed the fiscal year either three or four months when I first got on the council to coincide with everyone else in the state. There's still a few communities, I think, that don't, you know, the fiscal year doesn't end on June 30th, but that's something you could research.
All right, item number seventeen.
Mr. President, I have one more motion.
Yep.
The second motion is to send another letter, I didn't want to put them both together. Another letter to the tax assessor, how we came up with twenty-eight cents. So twenty-eight cents was derived before the state budget was passed and before the tax rule was certified. So how did we come up with twenty-eight cents?
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DiStefanis to send a second letter to Tom Kane. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? Maybe a none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, item number seventeen. Real estate tax. Receive a letter from Claudette Mooney, tax collector. Received a letter from Claudette Mooney, tax collector, for a discussion and possible vote concerning the abatement of property taxes at nine forty Charles Street, Platte One, Lot 207, being occupied as a community police substation in the amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Do you have a motion to obey?
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe a none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eighteen, board appointments. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the appointment to be made to the Historic District Commission. Please see letter from chairperson.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman?
I think that's an appointment by the mayor's office, and I think the administration would have to make that, especially that he, yeah, but they're asking for it, I'm worried, to be a member of. I know what I'm saying, that they got to get approval, the administration have a ton of work on board.
Okay, so, what are we going to do with this one now?
Send a letter. Send a certified letter.
I'd like to stand a motion to send a certified letter to William Mackenzie Woodward, asking him whether or not he'd want to continue serving on the Historic District Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amareji, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe a none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nineteen, claims submitted. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims received from the following. Ferdinando G. Lombardi Jr., 174 Windmill Street, Pawtucket, Rhode Island. Kathleen Griznowski, 28 Benjamin Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island. Michael Medici, 37 Hobson Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. And Darius DeZickowitz, 209 Lexington Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do you have a motion to submit these claims to the Claims Committee?
No more.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiStefanis. Any questions? Maybe a none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty, Claims Committee Report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the Claims Committee report and approval, denial, or referral of the claims within said report to be presented by Councilman Fiola. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a Claims Committee meeting earlier this evening. The claim resolutions went as follows. DeZickowitz, damage to a fence from plow, approved, one thousand one hundred dollars. Flores, damage to a fence from a plow, approved, one thousand dollars. Medici, this was a sewer claim. This is approved, three thousand dollars, two thousand of which is for the installation of a check valve or backflow preventer. That is on Mr. Medici to hire the plumber. And Cronowski, this claim is a sewer claim, forward to the town's carrier, is over our deductible. And Lombardi claim, at this point, is not a claim. He is looking for additional information of the construction company that was doing construction, which subsequently caused his son to damage their vehicle, so I told him I'd help him out. Let's see if I can find out who that is. Motion to accept.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Fiola. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-one, Finance Committee report. Town council discussion in action, for god to the Finance Committee reports to be presented by Councilman DeStefanis. Councilman?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee meet, uh, met on June fourteenth at six P.M. Um, two items were on the agenda, the first one was, uh, tax abatements over a thousand. Um, the committee recommends, um, asking the council to abate City View in the amount of three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and twenty-four cents due to court agreements with the Town of North Providence and the owner of, uh, City View LLC. Um, also, uh, the committee is recommending that the council abate six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and twenty-two cents to Jeff Anthony Properties. Uh, the tax assessor was, um, at the meeting that evening and gave us a explanation of errors, um, on how they factored in the valuation of the property. Um, so due to errors, uh, on the town's part, um, we're asked, the, the committee voted to recommend abating. The second item on the agenda was the tax rate and the re-evaluation, uh, at that evening, that evening, the tax assessor and Maria Valley, the controller, gave the, the committee a, whatever information they possibly could at that time concerning where the tax rate would be, um, and at that time, the tax rule wasn't certified, the state hadn't approved the budget, um, and there was little information available concerning the reevaluation, all the numbers were still being tallied, so the committee recommended holding off the final budget vote for the following week or until those, until that information was presented. I make a motion to accept, as is?
So move. Uh, second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, tax addenda. Town council discussion in action, possible vote for the approval of the list of tax addendas received from tax assessor in the amount of one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and fifty cents for real estate and two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents for motor vehicles. Uh, motion to, to grant.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, tax abatements under a thousand. Town council discussion in action, impossible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand received from the tax assessor in the amount of eight-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and twenty-one cents for real estate and two-thousand-five-hundred-and-five dollars and eighty-nine cents for mo, motor vehicles. Do you have a motion to abate?
So move.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.